Good morning. Today is March 18th. It is now 10 o'clock and we will have the Montague County Commission meeting. We'll call it order. Eldon Callen.
Yeah.
Ed Hawkins.
Here.
Great. At this time, we're going to ask for a moment of silence if you stand and then we'll pledge to the flag. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, we will have consents and approval. County Administrator?
We have six of our donations, $687.86 for taxes in 2013-14, fiduciary orders of March 18 and 11, 2015, and there's a change in the date for the Ossio hearing that we have a quarter on minutes of March 4 and 11. Vouchers: General County Fund, $60,006, $1057. General County Purchasing Card, $21,002, $4173. Cool Severance Fund, $17,005, $1685. Camp Muffly Purchasing Card, $22296. Chestnut Ridge Park, $94.94. Chestnut Ridge Purchasing Card, $35670. Mason Dixon Park, $45. Number One Purchasing Card, $23695. Forte Town Industrial Tiff, $17,16671. A total of $117,496.41. I have two budget revisions. One is for moving $5,000 from County Commission line into dams and dredging. This is for the lock fees.
Right.
And the other is I have checks that Marsha Ashdown has collected. She's reimbursing us in the amount of $9,452.26 to move into her personal services line budget.
And what is the pleasure?
Move to approve.
Second.
It's been properly moved in second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? They pass us. Okay. Comments from the public. And please let me explain how we do this. What we ask you to do is to stand up, give your name, your address. You can speak on any issue. The reason why I'm stating that is because at 10:30, we have a public hearing. You can only discuss the tax levy. So I want it very clear. So if there's something that you want to talk about that doesn't have to do with the tax levy, this is the time for you to speak. So at this time, if there's anyone who would like to speak, please stand up. You can come forward. You could stay in the back. Whatever you'd like. Is there anyone who would like to speak at this time? Thank you.
Mayor John Celeste, I just wanted to let you know that everything's going pretty smooth on our reception.
Great.
And I called ahead.
I appreciate that. Thank you very much. Yes, sir.
Good morning. James Julie Eany, 256 Prairie Avenue, Morgantown, West Virginia. Historic Alexander Way House, very proud. I know we're having our public hearing at 10:30 today. Hopefully that'll answer questions for people and get it in an order. I made a couple calls around, called the county clerk's office, I guess, and of course, Carrie Blady's the one that puts the announcement in the paper and things like that. So I thought, okay, well, maybe if I call her office, she'll have some information for me about the levies and things like that. And of course, they said that they couldn't help me there, okay? The assessor's office, called them also, and I understand, everybody has their responsibilities and authority, so that's what I'm trying to make sure that the public understands who they may go to and who are the people of equalization, who makes these certain decisions, who sets the levy rates, et cetera, et cetera. Because I think there maybe isn't an understanding of what the assessor's role is, maybe, that he's the one that actually assesses the property, that's all he does. From that point on, he's done with it, that he doesn't set any levy rates. And so what I'm saying is these are the type of things that I think that we need to clear out. Like, I'm reading the newspaper last, the 13th, I believe that was the public announcement. And it talks about we're having a 19% increase, okay? But those numbers that I'm following don't make any sense to me. Now, I'm a guy that's in the business, all right? I look at taxes all the time. Now, are those taxes only on the counties' part? Is that the whole thing? Where's the cities' part? The Board of Education? What I know, that when I look at my taxes, it's been very, very simple over the years and it hasn't changed much. I get $100,000 assessment at 60% of that, okay? On rental property, class four property, it seems that the rate is approximately 2.5, all right? Class two, 1.25. Well, I'm looking in the paper and none of those figures reflect any of that. So I'm hoping that this meeting today, that there'll be an understanding of what actually these numbers represent and what they mean and what the increase means, okay? And that being said, then, I guess we'll be explained at the meeting today what these increases are anticipated for. I've heard a couple different things, but all that'll come out too, of why we need that. And then I guess, to sort of finish up this little exposé here on this, is that we're not set in stone about the 19%. It could go anywhere from 1% to 19%. We're not set in stone. Or is that number set in stone? I'm not asking for the answer right at this second. I'm hoping these answers come out to us. So are we between 1 and 19%? We know we're where this commission's locked, because my understanding is, to finish this, is that the commissioners actually do set the levy rates and do set.
Today. That is correct. And just for clarification, that was not our ad. That was an anonymous ad that was put in.
No, 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 no. I'm talking about the public announcement, March 13.
I know, but that, but there's a little bit specific because you intertwined two of the specific ads. So I just want to make that clear. But we'll try and explain that for you.
Oh, I didn't mention any other ad. If you were referring to an ad that was in the Sunday's paper, I assume that's what you're referring to.
Yes.
I hadn't mentioned that.
Okay. Well, that's where the question was brought up. Also, there is a document that should be, is available for everyone, that it's a two-page document. Did you not pick that up?
Yeah.
They're out there. Could you? Renetta?
I got it.
Okay. We're going to hand that out. So this will help clarify some of your questions right now.
I mean, I just, there's a lot of things out there that it appears that
Sure.
The public just doesn't have an understanding. And this, this commission's been, been very, I'm not sure what the word would be.
Transparent.
Well, you're way ahead of me.
Sorry.
I hope you're transparent and what I'm trying to say is this. This community, for the last couple of years, hasn't seen their levy rates or their tax rates go up, okay?
Yes.
And so it needs to be explained to them to make them understand why we stayed level for this, but now we're looking at such a large hike.
Okay.
And so those are the things that obviously
Great. And you might want to get a copy of that sheet, too. Thank you. Thank you very much. Yes, sir.
They'd be a 46200 Mid-Atlantic Drive.
Okay.
I'm the anonymous advertiser in the newspaper. My brother and I. We will continue to advertise, to notify the public. We will be signing and we will be with our group, the North Central Property Owner Association.
Okay.
And we understand what the County Commission's doing and have no, no real issue with County Commission unless there's something legally. You all have a job to do and, you know, you have to follow the law as you do or have done on appeals or, you know, you can only answer the questions that are presented in front of you. If you're an accountant doing accounting and doing the taxes, no matter what information I give you, that's all you can file the taxes to the IRS on. If I give you false information, then you've got, you're going to probably make a false or a bad decision. If you've got false information from a doctor or x-ray, then you're going to have some bad information. And, you know, I'm here also to speak this afternoon or later on this morning on the 19% possible increase. The public needs to know why, and maybe you all can do as, as, this might help a little bit.
Sure.
And publicly, you know, as Jim said, the public needs to understand, we do know that part of the problem is this assessor will not meet with us. I don't know what his problem is. There is no suit against him presently. We've dropped it, but there may be another one. But this guy won't call us back.
Okay. Just be real careful. I allowed the last week. Just be very careful what you say. If you want to make general comments.
Yes. Well, the general comment is the assessor has a duty to the community. We're a taxpayer. We have no suit against him.
Fine.
Two, three months ago, he wouldn't meet with us because we were suing, okay? We need some answers.
Sure.
We need to clarify why John Lynch is not paying taxes and Mark Nessler and these companies they own. We need to clarify why ACC is going to get a free ride, which they're not going to get. We need to clarify why the Bodnar Group building, the Connector Building, these are all private developments. We keep stressing that. And the assessor won't sit down and give us any explanation. There's pros and cons to why they should, you know, or should not be. These have all been deemed by our attorneys and the attorneys that you all hired and the assessor. I would like to see why the assessor's changing his mind back and forth. I don't know who to go to other than the court system again to get an answer, but I respect your job. I understand if you have to raise taxes 19 or 30% in this community. But to give free rides to private developers, it's not there. And if this isn't a jealousy thing, they could build all they want with WVU. They're hiding under the skirt of WVU. There's a lot of people that are upset. WVU is tax exempt, but, but the private parts are not. They are taking depreciation. It has been deemed, these guys, a John Lynch, a Mark Nessler, a Ryan Lynch, an ACC. Now, ACC's doing a beautiful project, paying taxes and buying permits in Sunnyside. Perfect. Fits in the zone. There's a parking garage going up right now with no permits. Again, it's not your problem, but it is a private parking garage with private money. WVU does not own the parking garage. Show me the difference. Mark is getting bad information. We need to get some help from you all because you all can only rule on information given to you.
Okay.
This is very costly to the, to the local citizens of Montague County and for Mark Nessler, John Lynch, ACC, and these guys to get free rides, it's not correct for the public.
Okay. Thank you very much. Is there anyone else who would like to speak on a general issue? We will have the public hearing at 10:30. Anyone else?
Yeah.
Did you, did you want to? Yeah, sure. Go ahead.
Yeah, my name is Robert Burke over. I'm the president of Volunteer Fire Department Association.
Could you put your address so we just have it there?
My address is P. Box 918, Thankless, West Virginia.
Thank you.
This is something for the commissioners. There are 16 pages here. That was from March 5th to March 9th. It was pertaining to the snowstorm we had. Those 16 pages are nothing but volunteer fire departments' callouts. That's one little snowstorm.
Sure. Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak? Seeing no one else, I will close the comments from the public. Great. Okay. Grants. Renetta, come on down.
I just have one item today.
Okay.
A few months back, we talked about doing a geocaching project with the parks and some of the sites in Montague County. We're going to submit a letter to the West Virginia Development Office asking for $4,123.70 to fund the supplies that would go towards that project. He was asking the commission to sign that today.
Move to approve. Not authorized by the president to sign.
Second.
Okay. It's been properly moved in second. I also want to say that this is the 10-year anniversary of this program and they're expecting a very large number of individuals to come to this, spend the weekend here, and also from what I've been told, I've even talked to down at Camp Muffet 4H, that they're going to come up with some places for the caching in that area. So I think it's going to show the whole county in a positive light. So with that, I call the question. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes. I hope we get it. Hope there's any money left. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay. At this time, we have two resolutions. I will say, the first one is to consider an act upon a proposed resolution regarding the setting of a public hearing date with respect to projects and improvements within the University Town Center Economic Opportunity Development District set forth in the Economic Opportunity Development District supplemental application for the developmental district. In English, because that's what I asked them to send me something in English. Basically, this is not, I want to get it very clear, this is not a new TIF. All this is, is taking the TIF and modifying the TIF to provide additional bonding capacity in an amount not to exceed $50,000 to finance the cost of such infrastructure improvements in one or more phases. And that's all this is doing, is modifying what we have now. Is there a motion on the floor?
I just want to recognize Tom Ammon, our attorney.
Okay.
In the event that anyone, any commissioner has any question, he's
Great.
He's available. But I would move that we pass the resolution.
Second.
It's been properly moved in second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Great. Step two is, not step toe, but step two, to consider an act upon a proposed resolution regarding the setting of a public hearing date with respect to the approval of a public infrastructure project and improvements within the County Commission of Mon County District Number Four, the TIF district, set forth in the tax increment financing project plan application for the TIF district. And all this does is set, as it says, it sets up a public hearing with the initial estimated cost of the infrastructure improvements to be financed pursuant to the TIF bonds to, for, okay, or revenues is $45 million with an estimated $35 million of funding to be provided from excise tax bonds and $10 million to be provided from property tax bonds to be issued in one or more series in phases. And again, does anyone have a question or did you want to?
I move to approve the resolution.
Second.
It's been properly moved in second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And let me add that that hearing date is Wednesday, April 8th at 10:30 a.m. here in our office.
Okay. And again, I do want to get it very clear, and the newspaper get very clear, and on the tape, this is not a new TIF. All this is, is a modification and it actually helps us.
It's phase two.
Phase two.
It was all planned in phases.
Exactly.
This is phase two.
Thank you.
But it's the same TIF.
Right.
It doesn't add anything, change anything.
Okay. I will hold off on the public hearing because when we address 10:30, this commission wants to make sure we're exactly at 10:30.
Yeah, we can't start.
We can't start till then. We'll hold on a second. And I could say, and maybe Eldon wants a 30-second to thank the delegate members who were able, you went down there in Charleston and you were able to get the modification. So this TIF is beneficial for
Yes. I'll
Dress that later.
Next week
Okay.
I will come in with a full legislative report on behalf of the commission.
Okay.
I decided not to do it this week with so many other things going on.
Yes.
And since the legislature's out of session, except for the budget, they're not going to be doing anything special. But we were, we were, we were, I was, and I know the other commissioners are very appreciative of our delegation that stood with Montague County, especially on the Senate side, of course, we have the six senators. But on the House side, we have, actually, we have seven delegates with Dave Pethel and Amy Summers.
Right.
But I got to mention Cindy Fritch and Joe Statler that went the extra mile to, to help us on a number of issues that directly affected Montague County. But I want to praise, praise all 13 of them.
Right.
Delegates and senators.
A lot of times, we get on them for issues, but they also deserve praise when they really have stepped up and supported. And under correspondence, I'm going to mention about that with the PILP because they deserve the credit for that.
Correct.
We're still working on getting the paperwork done.
I can, I can
Do you want to?
I can make a couple other
Okay. Go ahead.
Analysis notes, if I can find my notes. Okay. This morning at Main Street Morgantown, it was announced, and I don't know if the press release has gone out yet or not, Ben, you may already know this, that the new Main Street Morgantown director is Tiffany Samuels. She, she was coming to us from United Way in Fairmont. So she'll be, she'll be starting full-time on, on Monday. So I wanted to, I wanted to announce that.
Okay. Thank you.
We'll be having a reception for her at some time, in a couple weeks, so that she can meet the public.
Okay.
Or the public can meet her.
Great. But we look forward to meeting her. Okay. Now that you got all the paperwork with the lawyer on the side, can we move, are we able to move forward for correspondence?
Okay. Actually, under correspondence, after the agenda was done, I've gotten some of our routine requests for reimbursements.
Oh, okay.
This is a requisition for payment number five, University Town Center Administrative Expense Fund, Series 2014 A and B taxable, the amount of $220.85 to be dispersed to Steptoe and Johnson. This is a requisition for payment number six, University Town Center Administrative Expense, Series 2014 A taxable, and the amount of $855 for Steptoe and Johnson. This is requisition for payment number six, same administrative expense, $855 for Steptoe and Johnson. And this is on the Monview LLC, $4,515,000 from the Series 2014 B taxable TIF bonds for payment to Canalway Stone.
Move to approve the payments.
Second.
It's been properly moved in second for, to approve all these payments. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? It passes and we can now pay them. Is there any other correspondence?
No.
Did anyone have?
Do you want to drop on down and do new business? We can always come back at 10:30.
Sure.
We've got another 10 minutes.
Sure. Well, unfinished business? I mean, is it?
Unfinished business. We were speaking with Marsha Ashdown regarding scanning equipment for our office
Yes.
So she can convert some files. I'd like to set a bid opening date of Wednesday, April 15 at 10:30 to accept bids for that scanning equipment.
Move to set a bid opening date as stated by our administrator.
Second.
It's been properly moved in second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Passes.
And also, we discussed with Judge Claudez, having an individual hired by the state, we're not paying for them
Right.
To kind of audit the criminal records and improve the way they're handled. This is a memorandum stating that we're going to participate in that program.
And we're going to provide
Office space.
Office space.
I'd move that we sign a memorandum of commitment and provide necessary office space for this individual
Second.
That does criminal records improvement project.
Second.
Okay. It's been properly moved in second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Great. Okay. Well, we can go to new business. Memorandum of commitment to
That's what we just did. She jumped, she jumped
Jumped, okay.
She jumped on you.
Just to go back, under correspondence, two good things, two great things. First of all, just, we do have the recycling this week, but I have been in contact and just, we are going to expand the recycling now as long, I don't believe, as long as the commission would approve. Basically, it's costing nothing to the residents and nothing to us. PC renewal will now be starting in April, a commitment to recycle electronics, TVs, and it'll be twice a week and it'll be no cost, and we're setting that up now. So that's been a request, so we're now going to expand it there. And also, the other great news for this year, as long as it doesn't come up in the new session, which I don't think it will budget session, the three county commissioners have worked extensively to save this county $110 million. This was the money that was coming out of the PILP agreement for the property taxes that the governor, or, I'll be careful, the state tax office informed the governor that he could possibly take that money out of the Montague County budget and this area. We were very fortunate, all the delegates from all, you know, both parties, both Democratic and Republican, called us. We got together with the other nine counties and we were able to barely defeat it and take out an amendment, which was 46 to 44. It was a very close vote. And then the Senate made it very clear, and in fact, the governor, governor's aide during the hearing said that there was a grassroots effort from Montague County and got the other counties, so they're now not going after it at this time. So the good news is the money is still there to go to the citizens and to the school system. The bad news is it can be brought up every year. And that's why we met with the Board of Education, had an excellent meeting, and we're going to look and monitor to see what we can do to make sure that that money is not taken. But that is $110 million that would have been gone if we had not worked together. And I want to give a great deal of credit to both the Democrats and Republicans on both sides of the House and Senate because they deserve it. They went out and really fought hard, and I know we get them on a lot of other things, but there's $110 million that they did save and they deserve, they truly deserve that. Okay. We're still seven minutes. Okay. I will move forward at least. We'll have any reports from elected officials. Would anyone like to stand up and be heard? No? Okay. We're moving forward. Do you want to do the county meeting or do you want to wait? Because I
I really don't have anything more.
Okay.
I just had the Main Street Morgantown issue. Everything else is legislative related and I decided that it'd be better because it would take some time to go over all the bills. It was about 15 bills that I worked on actively with, with County Commissioners Association, West Virginia Association of Counties. About nine of them would have been, would have been taking stuff away from the counties or given unfunded mandates to the counties. So it was, we were, we were rather successful, but I'll give a more complete report next week when we have more time.
Okay.
My only report would be to thank the other two commissioners, quite frankly, for enabling me to participate in these discussions relative to the budget to be set. It is, of course, a, I have read budgets and done budgets before, but it was made very easy by the harmony which this group is operating under. Thank you.
And just
Thank you, Ed.
Yeah. I appreciate that. Something I also had posted, I was quite, as I said, honored because we went through line by line, every actual, you know, and I have to give credit to Diane, who got us all the materials, and we went through several hours of discussion. We didn't agree all the time, but I believe what we did was come up with something that we believe is important for moving this community forward and competing economically, both not with any other county, but also nationwide, and that's what we're looking at. Let's see. I'm trying to kill five more minutes. Trying to kill five more minutes. Usually, we don't
We can have a timeout.
Yeah. Basically
I think it's longer.
I know. Um, basically, I know, that's, yeah, that's what really scares me. Just so that everyone knows at five minutes, that you have the time.
What's that?
Oh, I better check my, yeah.
Clock's wrong?
Yes, 10:28, so we have two minutes.
10:29, just turned to 10:29, you've got one more minute.
Okay, yes, I'll explain the policy and the procedures of what we're going to go on there. First, hopefully everyone received the two-page document, if you hadn't, there are over 50 copies. It explains not only where the projections are, where we would be considering our money going to, but also it shows where the actual costs, and I want to get it very clear when you speak, that there seemed to be some confusion when people read the article, whether it's whichever ad, they somehow interpreted that it was a $19 per $100 increase. That is incorrect. It's two and a half cents per $100, or in other words, what it means is for a $100,000 home, it'd be around $30 per $100,000 home, there isn't a $19 per $100. So there was some confusion on that. Also, it's only on the county commission's property tax, it is not on the classes, it is not on anything to do with the educational levy. So that's why I wanted to make real clear, and that seems to be some confusion. What we are planning to do to try and make this equitable and fair and have this as a meeting, since it is a hearing, we will allow any individual to speak pro or con on the increase of the two and a half cents. We will only allow you to speak on the increase and the levy of the two and a half percent, two and a half cents. No other acceptance, anything on any other issue will be accepted, so please, I ask you to follow those rules. If you become out of line, I will ask you the first time to try and keep it forward, if not, then we will go to step two, and hopefully we don't have to go to step two. So when I open up the meeting, you will have three minutes, and also I will write what, I will put down what my wife gave me before the hearing, it says, "Slow to speak, quick to listen, slow to anger." So with that, I ask you, we have the public hearing is now open, if you want to come up forward or not, if you could stand, state your name, your address, because we have to document that, and then you have three minutes once you begin speaking, so...
To that end, I will be timing it, I will give you a one minute, okay, when you're getting to the last one.
Go ahead.
My name's Sandra Christopher, I live at 29 Gubman Hill Road in Morgantown. I'm representing the Montague County Volunteer Fire Department Association. Several months ago, the association came before the commission requesting some additional funding, which we got rejected on, and part of that was that you didn't want to raise taxes, and if we wanted to raise, we would have to put it on the ballot. Well, now you're raising taxes, and you're doing that on your own, and our question is, can the volunteer fire departments expect any more funding if you raise the taxes?
Yes.
And my other question is...
Big part of it.
Down here on this ad that you had in the paper, it says areas to be allocated, it's listing emergency services equipment. We want to know what that is. Is it, I mean, are you talking bunker beer, SCBA, are you talking ambulances, are you talking, what is emergency services equipment?
Okay.
We don't understand it.
Okay. Thank you, Sandra. Is there anyone else? Yes, sir.
One second, I'll reset here.
Okay, hold on.
My name is Tom Witt, I reside at 3202 Deerfield Court in the Chee Lake area, and I'm here to support the levy increase. I request and receive copy of the county levy rates by class of property, along with the revenues raised by the levy, and afflicted these, and want to bring this attention, this information to your attention. Total revenues for all classes were over $7 million in fiscal year 2001, and they rose to over $14,000, $14 million in fiscal year 2015, but the highest years that the county received were actually in fiscal years 2011 through 2012, which is higher than what we enjoy at the present time. But simply looking at this ignores the effects of inflation and depreciation of fiscal assets. If one adjusts for inflation, the highest amount raised was FY 2011, while the inflation-adjusted amount in this current fiscal year is nearly $1.2 million less, and we know that the equipment and facilities have continued to deteriorate. We have also shown dramatic growth in the county population. When I looked at 2001, we had 83,230 people, today we have, in 2013, 102,274, a growth of 19,000 people, and we know that growth is going to continue in the future. So if you look at adjusting the inflation amount for the population, we know that the peak amount spent was in fiscal year 2011 at $143 per person, $2,010, and by 2011, this had fallen to $113 per person, the decline of 21%. So we've had pervasive effects of inflation, continued population growth, and that has put your revenues that you currently enjoy well behind what they really should be. So the return of the amount to the previous level will also be beneficial, because it'll get us back, but not even up to fiscal year 2001. But even with that, the higher levy rates, you will still have amongst the lowest levy rates in West Virginia, and our state overall has some of the lowest property taxes of any state in the country. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
David Beer for 6,200 Minute Land Drive. I couldn't agree with him much more, he's 100% right. And if, you know, to run this county, you all need a budget, and you need money. And again, you know, we're not going to go away, but why would we have to raise this if we could collect on taxes that the assessor is not assessing on private developments? And that's going to bring you some money, that's going to bring the community a lot of money. And the big thing is here, is we are a growing community, and we want parks, we need fire, the fire departments need money, everybody needs to operate, they need cash flow, and we understand what you need to do. Again, the article that we ran, and will be running some more, is just to inform the public of what's going on out there. I don't know what, again, the county commission can do to help, but, you know, we've got our attorneys and real estate experts and consultants giving us the answers, and these private-public are good things to get things done, there are ways of financing, there are ways of developing and getting, whether it's a TIF or a public-private joint venture, you still have to pay taxes on the private end. And we can't stress enough that we need to sit down and have a workshop, and that we need to get our assessor some help, because, you know, he is going in one time an assessor, and then has a meeting with you all on an appeal, and then all of a sudden, a $50 million project has no value. I don't know how to get it across to the public, but we do need more tax dollars, and our companies and our colleagues in our business and other businesses, and most people don't have a problem if they're getting a value for their taxes. If we're getting parks and recreation, and we're getting something out of our tax dollars, we don't have a problem paying the increase. And I am not against the increase, I want the public to know, part of the increase is coming from the private developers sucking up and not paying taxes to the tune of millions of dollars a year, and it's very disheartening that some of the local developers are local people, and that's what, that's what needs to be worked out. Thank you again.
Thank you very much for your comments, Mr. Beer. Is there anyone else who would like, is there anyone in the back room? Come on down. Hi, Mr. Rice.
I'm Bill Rice, I live at 1225 Baker's Ridge Road, I'm the chairman of Citizens Committee, the NPO, I'm a board member of the Morgantown Utility Board, I'm a board member of the West Run Board of Zoning Appeals, and I also serve on the Chamber of Commerce Transportation Committee. Joe Stahler and I have gone back a long ways, and I maintain pretty close contact with him. What happened to state legislature, obviously, was a huge issue with the budget, much like you're wrestling with, and Nicholas County of itself is looking at a deficit of laying off county employees because of the tax revenues there. In conversations I had with all the committees that I serve on and the people, and I'm also, I'm 110% supporter of the Volunteer Fire Association, I attend as many meetings as I can with them, it is absolute necessity that people pay for the services that they get, absolute necessity. Now, obviously, there's some conflicts between state law and the university system and the way it can operate, and the citizens of the county. Those are not budget issues as much as our legislative issues, but the general consensus of all the people I talk to out there, if they can see the product, they will pay for it in a respectable way. So in the sales job, in my opinion, when May comes and the budget gets approved, and as well as the Board of Education's budget, which, and they'll, they'll have to go through the RIF process, I understand, with some of the things they're into, people will be clamoring for change as long as they can see the result. So it just, i- if it becomes election issue, the people, I resent the word taxes, they won't so much if they see a result, and that's the conversation I've had with many in the county. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Rice, I appreciate the comments. Hi, is there anyone else? How you doing?
Don't smile so much, Tom.
I smile all the time.
734 Bethel Church Road, I guess I'll be the lone dissenting voice right about now.
Okay.
I adamantly oppose it, I feel it's just continued coercion. I live rural, I don't know how many of you may have traveled seven on 19 today, but it's an adventure getting here. There's several facets of this that I just don't agree with. From what I've been able to find out, my class three property, of course, will go up twice what my residential rate will. I don't feel that I'm getting value for my money, I don't feel that I've gotten value for my money so far. And then, the university, let's say, if you would collect from them like you collect from me, I'm forced to be in competition with them with a rental. Well, they don't pay any taxes, but I do. Well, I think that's grossly unfair. Then, some of the people I rent to, a single mom, for example, Forbes tells me that that woman makes just 77% of the same dollar that a guy does. So, you know, this tax increase is going to hurt a single mom, a working mother, a female homeowner, more than it's going to hurt anybody else, there again, another example of being grossly unfair. The Dominion Post told me just recently, I think it was for the sixth year in a row, quality of life here was abysmal, maybe? I can agree with that, I can see a tax burden adding to that. I'm not happy about this, I don't think it's right, and using the force of law to fund this at the tenant household, when I run out of money, I don't go over to the Smith household and take more money just because I can, and effectively, that's what you're doing. You know what I mean? I think some budget cuts, some financial responsibility, that's what's needed here, not an increase in taxes like what you're proposing, not at all.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else?
My name is Bill Downey, I'm at 1171 Kingwood Pike in Morgantown. I've been a resident of Montague County for 64 years. I agree, I oppose the tax also. I, as everybody said, I think the university ought to be paying its fair share. I also work for one of the hospitals in town. We have continuing to buy property, we bought the pre-building, that now comes off of the tax dollars. I think that if everybody's going to compete with the individual in Morgantown, then they ought to be on a fair, equal share.
Thanks very much, Ms. Downey. Is there anyone else out there? Yes.
Don Corwin Jr., 251 Beecher Avenue, Morgantown. I'm shocked, this commission has brought a tax increase before the taxpayers of the county, and I'd like to address the people of the county, I don't want to address the commission. Commission's already said they're going to increase our taxes, Commissioner Cowan said in the paper, this is just a formality. I own a class four...
Do not, do not make up things.
Sir?
I did not say anything like that.
I'd like to finish, sir, you, I'd like to quote you from the Dominion Post.
No, I'm not going to sit here and let someone lie, I've never said that.
I own a class four property on Grand Avenue, it's a 100-year-old house, it's about a, I rented it to four people, it's a small little four-bedroom house. Last year, I paid $2,500 in class four property tax. 50 feet across the alleyway is a 900-bed, this is not owned by the university, this is a private development. Guess how much tax they paid, folks? Zero. They paid zero tax. $250 million, no, let me finish, sir, please.
No, sir, you need to address, this is a public, and I appreciate that you're addressing them, but you need to address us, that's how publicity works, just for your information.
Fair enough.
Thank you.
$250 million of, this is not university development, this is a private, for-profit development apartment complex. Zero taxes. Before we talk about increasing taxes on single parents, on elderly people who have aren't fixed incomes, let's talk about collecting the taxes that are owed in this county, gentlemen. Let's do the job we're supposed to do before we start going and penalizing individuals and small business. And where are the budget cuts? I've not seen any proposals to cut any budget. The folks in Nicholas County, they face the budget shortfall, they've had to make some very difficult decisions, and I understand it's hard, but it's called leadership. When you don't have the money, I don't have the money, I had to lay two people off last year to pay my property tax. I would ask that the folks in this, in this county think about this the next time the elections come up, because this is ridiculous. I thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, Mr. Corwin. Hi, is there anyone else who'd like to speak? Mr. Giuliani.
Good morning, James Giuliani, again. Hit along a little bit of this earlier, I think, everybody, we're starting to get the idea here, we're starting to get the idea here, all right? WVU needs to come to the table, all right? I mean, WVU needs to come to the table, because everything we're talking about here has to do with WVU. But do we ever get them to come to the table? No! We're all in here fighting for our roads, okay, which we have not, all right? We're going to build a $70 million bridge across the West River to do what? We can't even fix the roads that we have, we're building engine chain, interchanges for what? What about the people that live here now? I understand about the growth, okay, that we want growth, we want growth, we want growth. Who gives a crap about the people that live here now, all right? I never have once, ever come before this commission, ever asking for an adjustment on my assessment of my property, okay? But guess what? Next year, I'll be in here with every piece of property that I own, every piece of property. Why? Because I'm going to need a 20% adjustment. I'm going to need a 20% adjustment, because that's what the taxes are on a building. Per bedroom, it's $80 to $90 a bedroom that they're avoiding paying in property taxes a month, $1,200 per bedroom possibly, okay? That I'm subsidizing? That all these people in here, not just rental owners, not just business people, everybody that lives in this community, okay? And like the different people said, little old ladies, housewives, single people, okay? This hits them, and like I said, this is just the county's part, this is just the county's part. How about the Board of Education? They've got a levy coming up, all of us are going to come in, we're all in the same boat. If indeed, we need to make adjustments, that's what we're going to need to do. If indeed, that's what we need to do, why don't we do it? Mr. Witt was very eloquent in what he said to you all this morning. I'm glad that somebody brought out the facts in the sense that this commission has not been fair to the community. You're not fair to the community by not raising our taxes in the sense that we need the money to run it. So if we keep ourselves level for three or four years, and then say, three years later, oh, we've got to increase this because now we need this money. There's many ways of getting the matter. The pie is smaller, the pie keeps getting smaller because WVU keeps taking it off the table, okay? Now they come and not just take it off the table like the pre-problem, but they're coming in and developing it. But yet, we ignore it, totally ignore it. Like I said, we all must believe in magic, because we had a $50 million development that's now zero. I just can't explain these things. But in any case, I'm not against a tax raise of the taxes if we get something for them. What do we get for them? And why don't we have an equal playing field, and a fair playing field, that everybody gets to do the same thing? It's not that much fun, but we all have to do it, we all have to reach deep. It's terrible that we have to lay off employees, I'd hate to have to do that, I haven't come to that yet, but I guarantee that I will be here next year asking for my assessments to be lowered based on what the others do. And all I'm asking for is that fairness. Subsidize them, subsidize me.
Thank you very much.
Well, I do apologize for being late.
That's all right, you can just stand, if you just give your name and your address, and then you'll have three minutes, thank you for coming.
My name is Jane Kirkson, I live at 524 Union Avenue in Morgantown. And I take this as an effort to get the message out, so I have no complaints with the commissioners. But what I don't understand is when this is, and this may have already been answered, I apologize, if it was university land, and a private developer builds on it, how does the building become university property?
Good question.
And who, yes, if, if the university is getting half of the rent from the development, and the contractor who built it is getting half the rent, it seems only right that the contractor would pay at least half of the assessment of the property taxes. Now, I'm a little old lady in Tennessee, I live in a house that's way too big for me, and I try to keep it up, but every time I keep it up and fix it up, my taxes are raised. Well, okay, I'll live with that, I'm not going to live in a shack just to keep the taxes down. But I do think it is absolutely unfair to let the contractor come in on the, on the university's pipeline and get the university benefits if they are indeed getting half the rent. And I would think that they would get something if they developed the land. Thank you.
Thank you very much, James. Bless you.
My name is Michael Castle, I live at 3912 West Lake Road. You know, as stewards of the tax dollar, this is something you guys have to address, and you have to see more of it coming. You're looking at devaluation of property and more university acquisition, hospital acquisition, foundation acquisition, that is going to further lower the tax base. By doing nothing, you're creating incentive for this to continue. You think this is the only time that you're going to be sitting here talking about increasing the tax by 20%? This is going to happen in the future, there's nothing that's being done to address it, there's nothing that's being done to stop it, and you're the guys acting on behalf of us, you're the ones who should be looking out for our dollars. There's no budget cuts, this is something that they all can't, someone should have seen coming. We all saw it coming. Someone who's at the wheel should be noticing this thing. And I'd ask you to take that under consideration.
Thank you very much, Mr. Castle. Is there anyone else, unless there's anyone else out there? Oh, okay, go ahead.
Hi, I'm Cindy Jones, I live at Paradise Lake. I've been listening to these comments and everything, and the thing that I think that's coming out is that we're raising taxes just to maintain the status quo. You're not raising taxes so that we can better our roads, you're not raising taxes so that we can make the community more viable, it seems that it's just to keep it going the way it is, and I'm not satisfied where my tax dollars are being spent when I have to travel Beecher Street Avenue, 119 South is just like the gentleman said, 19, it's a trip coming in here, but the roads are deplorable. There was, as far as the state goes down in Rollsburg, they canceled a race because the roads are so bad, these people can't have a race on the road. What does that say about West Virginia? They tout tourism, tourism, who wants to come when it looks like this? My uncle in Bedford, PA, won't come to visit me because I'm not traveling all those damn West Virginia roads, and I believe I agree with him. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else out there? Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
My name's Bill Jones, I live at 427 Moscow Drive in Morgantown, and I'm retired now, my wife and I live on a fixed income. In the past, I worked as a contractor in the Morgantown area, and I would like for the commission to explain to me, now I no longer work as a contractor, but I would like to know how this is not discrimination, that you allow a contractor to work with WVU and it's tax-free. I don't understand that. The hardest thing about...
We will answer that question.
I'd appreciate that, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Anthony Slaro, 525 Milford Street, Morgantown.
Yes, sir.
I don't see any budget cuts, and in the last 10 years, the economy's not been good, and all us business owners have had to tighten our belts, and I just don't see, you know, you guys have got more and more money. We've had, we have less renters because now there are so many more apartments that universities are in, so we can't fill all our units. It takes a month and a half of every single rent I have to pay my property tax, a month and a half, and I still have to make my payment on millions of dollars that I have invested in this town. I put these rentals up, I put a lot of money in there, the increase of the property values... The increase of the property values went up. Where'd all these increases go from the values of these properties going up? University Town Center, Suncrest Town Center. These places weren't there fifteen, twenty years ago. Now they're there, you've got a big increase in property values, and you're still asking us for more money? Where's it at? After the reappraisal, you had all the properties checked. Was there an increase to you guys on the, to the county, on the value of the properties? It was lower before the reappraisal? We don't have, I don't have these answers, okay? I don't know why we have to keep going increases. Tighten your belts. We have to. And plus, the developers in this town, and I'm not one of them, because I'm small, have put hundreds of millions of dollars in property increases in this town. And they're the ones that were, they're the ones that get hit with the taxes all the time. And they pay double the tax because it's commercial property. It's not fair. We have to stop sometime. That's all I got.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else? Yes. Hi.
My name is Lady Clutch, and I work in the tax office. And what I'm hearing is a lot of upsetness. So perhaps there's a way that maybe we could work with the university and the property owners, and maybe we could come to some sort of agreement where the university would be willing to work with the contractors, and perhaps they would be willing to work out some type of agreement where they would be willing to pay some sort of tax, like a payment in lieu of taxes, sort of the way like Longview works. So maybe there's a way that we could talk to them as the county. We could have maybe a sit-down agreement, and we could make some type of, of meeting perhaps, and maybe we could work something out where everyone maybe could come to an agreement so that everyone was a little happier with the situation. So that might be another way that we can go. So perhaps that would be a solution.
Thank you.
There's another.
Okay, thank you.
It calls three five five five, Morgantown. There you go.
Good.
If you announce since I missed it, what is the total additional revenue that you will raise by this increase?
Is it three? Is it three? I think it's two point seven million. I think it's around two point seven million.
I haven't seen the numbers from the assessor's office.
Yeah, let's say two point seven to three million.
All right. Secondly, are you required to present an individual itemized budget before you, before you make this increase?
Yes.
So people will know exactly where it's going instead of generals.
Yes, yes. Yeah, we're not like this.
Can I, can I, he's got specific questions, it's, and I can sort of explain this.
Okay.
If I may.
Go ahead.
What we, what we do, we've got to submit a budget with a proposed levy rate by the end of March, March twenty-eighth, I think it is. That then goes to the state tax office. Tax, tax office reviews all the budget, and it goes online. Every item in the budget, both the coal severance fund and the general revenue fund, that goes in the budget in a planned carryover, what might, might come from prior years, carryover. At that point, then, once the auditor completes it, the third Tuesday in April, the third Tuesday in April, we meet, again have another public hearing, and that's when we decide whether we're gonna keep that levy rate, or lower that levy rate, or change it. The, the actual setting of the levy rate, the official setting of the levy rate is not until the third Tuesday in April. So this gentleman out here that made stuff up about me, has no, no idea as to how the process works. It's, it's a step-by-step process. So what we're hearing today, we, before next, next, March twenty-eighth, we've gotta come up with a suggested levy rate and, and a proposed itemized budget of everything, the coal severance and everything we're spending.
And so you, you have a public hearing before this Charleston though?
This is...
This is the first one.
I'm, I'm talking about of the actual budget items. Is, is, are the actual budget items reviewed by the public before they go to Charleston?
No, they're sent to Charleston, and then we have, then we have a, then we have a public hearing before we finally set the levy rate, where we have a hearing where people can come and speak if we wanted to make any changes. But that's, that's the, the process, step-by-step process.
Okay, thank you. And I'll, I'll put in a plug for another item I should have said earlier.
Sure.
You have nothing to do, no say over the county garbage collection, do you?
Not sure.
Yeah, that, that's a law that needs passed.
Right, nor recycling, yeah.
I've talked to them, you know what they say, don't you? I have nothing to do with that.
And I just wanna also answer one other, since you brought that up. We also have, and I want it very clear, we have nothing to do with the roads, at all. We can't pave the road, we can't put a pot... So when you talk about roads, just for clarification, you need to talk to the state.
We can't go out and pave the road without their permission.
Right, we can't even give fifty thousand dollars as we did.
We tried to.
And they wouldn't take our money. So I just want to clear, that's a clarification. We have nothing to do with roads.
Could I ask a question regarding the two point seven million that goes to the county?
Yes.
Is that the amount of revenue that goes to the county, or is that the impact on the taxpayer? Is that just the county share?
That's the estimated re- revenue.
It's three point five to three point seven.
It's just, that's just the county. So the actual impact on the taxpayer could be up as high as ten million dollars, is that correct?
No, no, no. Our levy rate has nothing to do with the school board, and I'll explain that in greater detail.
We'll clarify.
A lot of people forget what I did over the last three years and saved millions and millions of dollars to the taxpayer's share of his county.
We'll try and answer a whole bunch of those questions. I think, I think we'll be able to do a lot of the questions being answered. Are there anyone else?
That was the increase, though.
Yeah, the three point five increase, yes.
It's what the taxes are on an increase.
Yeah, the, the sheets that you have in front of you will show you where the money's going.
Basically, it's twenty five, basically, it's twenty-five percent on twenty-six percent. The majority of your taxes go to the school board.
Correct.
That's, that's who sets the levy rate, and we could talk about that more.
So the school... But I'm asking about your rate only.
Right.
Your rate only goes up two point five million, right?
Yes, three, yeah, three point five.
Three point five million?
Three point five million.
Is the increase?
Is the increase, yes.
The levy rate that's shown in my tax ticket is not the one that you're increasing.
The levy rate that says county general revenue is, is what we're talking about today. All the school bond excess, we don't have any other levies. The county has no other levies.
Let me get a clarification, I can give you a specific of mine. I have a two hundred thousand dollar house. I get a tax ticket of twelve hundred dollars. Of that twelve hundred, two hundred and twenty-eight is for the county. My tax ticket, next year, if this all goes through with nothing else, it would be twelve hundred and sixty dollars roughly, or sixty extra dollars, or one candy bar a week.
And how much does the county get? That's the important question.
Right, and the county's only getting two hundred and eighty-eight of that twelve hundred and sixty dollars. That's what I want to get clear. It's only the county part.
That's it, so the, the, where it's, I only have one levy rate shown on my tax ticket, okay? But the, so the state current?
Oh, okay, yes.
The school current? None of those will go up?
No, that's up to the schools.
Can you, can you address this question?
Yeah.
And I don't have the numbers with me, but...
Yeah, here's a question that can be answered, yes.
The chief tax deputy, John.
Which I, I don't have that with me. Will he still standing there? Did she go back? Okay.
She ran.
She ran, and she went back downstairs. Of that levy rate that's broken down, that's the state portion, the county portion, the Board of Education's school current, school access, school levy, and then if it's within a municipality. So it'll only be that portion, and actually, we ran the numbers this morning. Do you wanna run downstairs and get that? The levy breakdown that we did? She'll go down and get that, and we can, we can tell you.
Give the exact numbers.
But the only part, portion that's gonna change is right now, it's point zero nine five. If, if you do the two and a half, it's one point two.
Right.
In that calculation. So it's not a nineteen percent increase over the entire tax amount. It's just that portion that right now is point nine five.
Point oh nine five.
Point oh nine five, yeah.
You know what would be a wonderful thing to do? I know we don't have a chart here, but if you all had a chart here and make it very simple for the public to understand, because...
Again, if you look at the second sheet that we handed out.
No, but I meant a total explanation of this much is going to the city if you live in the city. This much goes to the county, which we're talking about today, correct, Tom?
Yeah.
Okay. That's what I want everybody to understand, that's what Mr. Castle was asking the question. What am I looking at here? Am I looking at? So we need to understand if we had some sort of printout, or not just here, but if we had a board, what do you call it? That school teachers use?
Yes.
Like a board.
Okay, smart boards, we need some smart. Put it up there and do, do a total example on what we're looking at here, and understand that this is only the county's portion. This isn't the Board of Education's, this isn't the state's.
Well, we'll try and explain that in a little bit again. Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak? Yes, sir.
David Kelly, seven hundred and three Popper Woods Drive.
Yes, sir.
I think the, the commissioner was mentioning how much they save the taxpayers. You know, actually, I don't understand, because the reappraisal brought in so much more revenue.
No, that's not true, sir. If you want me to answer instead of waiting on it, I could answer, because I did it.
You're saying, you're saying that...
We did.
I did, I did.
We'll explain it to you, how?
I could explain it. We, we, we reduced it by three point one million dollars during the tax reappraisal. Of the prior year. I've got, I can tell you, I can tell you the whole history, because I was here, and I was the one that negotiated with the state tax department. Or the taxpayer in the first year of the re-appraisal for the county portion paid three point one million dollars less than before the reappraisal.
Oh, so in actual dollars, not...
In actual dollars. Because that's all I care about. I don't care what the levy rate, I care about what actual dollars.
I just thought it was a windfall for everybody that was on the end of the tax.
Well, that's what, that's what I went, that's why I got upset with this gentleman here, because nothing's certain for me. I don't know what I'm gonna do until I actually vote. But I'll tell you one thing, I went down and I negotiated, rather than saying fight, I negotiated with the state tax department, I negotiated with the governor, three or four times. This was, this was, I was told we'll never be done, we'll never be allowed to do that, which means that you, that, that, at that time, it would have gone up to about eighteen million. We cut it down to nine point five. The reason why we cut it down to nine point five, because we had over three thousand properties that we heard. The assessor, the assessor had probably, we had like fourteen thousand properties. Over six thousand five hundred properties the assessor dealt with. Three thousand, they couldn't settle and came back to us. At the time, we had, and I'll just explain how the taxes went. At the time, we had that, had to come up with a levy rate, we still had two thousand properties that we had to hear. We had no idea, we knew that the numbers were way, way up. So Bill Bartolo, Azel Kennedy, and I said, okay, we're gonna go with nine point five. Now, that was our rate at that, before we made that cut, was twelve point one two. So even if with this increase, I've decreased the taxes in this county.
Into dollars, not, I mean, I was thinking you were implying that nine point five ti- times a base that was doubled.
No, 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 no.
So you still, but you would've...
Well, let me finish what happened, okay? So as part of the agreement that I negotiated with the governor and the state tax department, they weren't too happy with, sometimes they don't like me to come to Charleston, but we were able to negotiate it, and we had to adopt the nine point five. The idea was to be revenue neutral. We raised fourteen point four million in two thousand eleven, twelve, my first year here. In two thousand twelve, thirteen, which is the first year of reappraisal, we only raised twelve point three million. So it went down, way down. Now, we were fully intending to adjust it back to be revenue neutral so we could get the next year. The reason why it went down so far, because we had no idea what the problems were gonna be. We had no idea what the, but part of the plan that I negotiated was that we would, we would cut the taxes, and then we would reduce and gradually bring it in over three years. And at that time, I stood right out here on the courthouse ladder. Whenever it was out there, but no one thanked me for that. Well, some people do, okay? And I explained, I promise you that I will fight any increase in this levy rate for three years to the property reappraisal, and I lived up to that promise. And I stuck to that promise.
I just know that in that reappraisal, you know, my, yeah, I have my own property too. And my property tax has doubled. Now, that probably, you're right, it probably means that I was under assessed for a while. Okay.
Seventeen years.
Well, okay, whose fault was that?
It wasn't anyone's fault in this room. The problem is, you're dealt with, you're dealt with the hand.
I'm not, we're here. Let me go ahead and explain what happened. So our plan, Azel's bills in line, was to, once we figured out, because the last property hearing we heard was on December thirty-first of that year. We had to get a circuit court judge approval to hear all those hearings to the end, because we thought every taxpayer had a right to be heard. So we were going to go revenue neutral. Well, what happened was the school board did not, did not lower, lower the levy rate, and was, was not revenue neutral.
And they got a big windfall.
And they got a big windfall. Because of that, because of that, Azel, Bill, and I said, no. We, we'll just suck it up and we'll cut budgets. And we cut, slashed, and have for three years slashed and cut budgets to the bone. The volunteer fire departments, I had, I had a plan of increasing them every year. I could not, I could not complete that plan. The, the law enforcement. So what happened was, for three years, we cut, cut, cut. As of, now remember that two thousand eleven revenue was fourteen point four million? La- two thousand thirteen revenue only went up to thirteen million. So we're still, we still lost over five million dollars, and we cut budgets. At that time, instead of you people coming in here and complaining about, we had the people that was wanting money from us come in and screaming, hollering, uh, why are you cutting our budgets? Why are you cutting our budgets? This, this past year, this year we're in right now, the revenue is fourteen point two million. Still two hundred thousand dollars less.
That's your cut?
That's our cut.
What's the total revenue for the county?
You mean, school board?
Well, we don't have, okay, that's not what we're dealing, okay, I'm gonna clear.
Well, I have, I have, well, wait, 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 just a second. I have no idea what the school's gonna do. That's, that, you'll need to go to their public hearing to decide what they're gonna do. I, I have no idea. I can only talk about our portion. But my point is that in three years, because of the plan that was adopted, six and a half million dollars that Bill Bartolo, Azel Kennedy, and I saved the taxpayers because of the property reappraisal.
I understand, that, that's, that's the real numbers that I wanted to know.
I appreciate that.
Of course, you can understand that, once again, I do side with the fact that I do believe that these joint ventures, you know, when, when you build something on a lease plan, you get taxed for your leasehold improvements. You know, and I just don't understand these things having no tax.
We'll try and explain that for you.
I, 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 I'm gonna go ahead and address this, since we're on this, I think people are about finished. The, 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 the big point, and actually, this is for my cousin, because he asked me this question. I told him I'd find the numbers. Two, two hundred, two hundred million dollars is all the property has increased since last year to this year. With all this building, with all this new stuff, it went from five point three billion to five point five billion. You only want two hundred million with all this building.
That's what's taxable, right?
Right, that supports what you're saying.
Okay.
And, and correct.
That, right, yeah, that's all right, I can answer that question. That's what, that is what we were able to assess and tax. We have no power.
Sure, I understand.
We have no power to go after WVU, WVU's the state. You know, we can't, we can't go after WVU. We have strict limited things that we can do.
Yes, but how about the private end of that arm?
Okay, we'll try and answer that question. I mean, when we discuss, I, I mean, you're right, but we'll explain that.
I, I, yeah, but I'm just saying that we don't have standing. We don't have standing. We could not go and sue them and try to make, we, because we don't have standing to do that.
If I was, if I was the assessor, I would assess them and make, make them take it to court.
Okay, well, why don't we talk about that? Let's keep with the two point five.
I, I understand what you're saying now about the relative, why you need an increase now, because effectively...
The money didn't go to us.
That's right. And, and, and damn the Board of Education, you know, they on their levy calls, when they ask the taxpayers to give them an excess levy, they stipulate what they want in a dollar figure, they stipulate what they want in a dollar figure and how, and that's how they set their rate. Now, when they receive a windfall, they just find a way to use it and they still take it and take it and take it. So, the next time the excess levy comes up, the citizens ought to think pretty hard about what they've already got.
Well, I agree. And that, and the point is, is the things that were stated has nothing to do with the way the county's handling this budget. We have cut, 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 cut. Now, people are screaming. We have not given a cost of living increase to the deputies. The deputies, and this is four years and that was a promise. It was a promise to keep the widows in their homes, to keep the people that are on fixed income. That was a promise that I made. That's a promise I kept.
There's one other thing that was mentioned to me and I don't know that this is true, but the big addition down here, I, I, I heard a lot of that was paid with excess funds.
What?
Which addition, I'm sorry?
Is that the justice building that you have?
Oh, the one down there?
No, no, that, that, they've got that all.
We'll explain.
We had to get, we had to get a bond on that. We had to make our first payment and, and this, and this is part of what this goes to. We have to pay one... We have to pay one point four million, which we already made one, one every year for that down there, which is part of what this goes for is one point four million and to try to help pe, help people that we have cut for the last three years.
One clarification it could be, you've done a great job. We can't argue because you're following the law, but one clarification. If we would collect taxes, if the assessor would do his job and collect and stand by his legal advice that he was given and collect on the three hundred plus million dollars worth of developments that are, that really are private, that we will prove it in, 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 would that change this?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Absolutely.
That's what I want the public to know.
That's why I gave...
Not the whole amount, but...
Now, yeah, and I don't know how it would.
It would change.
But I am, I am telling you, this commission is committed, and I have been for the last four years, not to raise taxes, to keep the money in people's pockets, to only spend it for the essential public services. I do not believe in government being privately, in the private business. I have stuck to that. I've, I've fought for that. And for anyone to say otherwise, they're just lying to their teeth and I do not count on its lies.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who hasn't spoken because I want to close the meeting? Okay, I'll let you speak if you have a point, a new point.
I gotta go. I'm just tired of hearing about you wanting praise for what you did. This is your job. You guys were elected to do it. I don't want to hear it with somebody in the past's problem.
I'd appreciate...
You're in here now, you work with what's here now and correct it.
Okay, and if, I'd appreciate if you'd stay for about ten minutes because I'll explain to you where those statements are false. If you'd like to sit down. So, I'll explain it.
I've been hearing him just sit there and talk.
Well, I'm not allowed to say anything yet because we're still in the public hearing.
I just, I just don't want to hear any...
Okay, well, we'll try and explain it to you. Is there anyone else who wants to speak specifically who hasn't spoken? Please state your name. Unfortunately, I got to hear the answer.
David Onio, ten fifty-two Summer School Road.
Hi, Dave. How you doing?
Bye, thank you.
Better than nothing.
Bless you guys.
Sure, go ahead.
I retired from the federal Bureau of Prisons. I was cost center manager, budget committees, going after money for, to run facilities, this and that. So, you know, as a public, you see things being built everywhere. The county's getting more income, things are being built, things are being built. But you actually don't see it in black and white. You know, like you're stating about the budget and what, how you held it down. School bond didn't back down, so our county taxes went up. The people just don't know. I don't know. I didn't know until I came to this meeting exactly what was going on. So, I think a lot of misconceptions going on and then, you know, the yes and as about this.
Some people want to mislead on purpose, just like this gentleman just left. He wants to mislead on purpose. He doesn't care.
Okay, well, okay.
You're there, but you know, it's probably easy for him.
Good, I'm glad you're here. Okay, is there anything else you'd like to say?
Well, you, you, there's no money value on this. You don't know, what are you increasing? How much is this costing, this and that? So, you know, it'd be nice to have that accessible on website or something if it is, I'm not sure.
Well, the reason why we can't put it yet is because we haven't approved it yet, so therefore there's no numbers yet. That's what we have to discuss. It's just projections.
On the twenty eighth.
Yeah, they will be, yeah, you'll see that.
You're talking about the levy rate before, you know, the public looks at some of this other stuff. Why is it being increased?
Because that's how the state does it.
That's the way they refer it. That's why we got...
That's, that's West Virginia.
Yeah, Bill.
Okay, okay. Is there anyone else? Thank you very much. Okay, if none, I'll have the public hearing portion closed now. We will try and respond before we make any decisions. Did you want to say something or you want to hold off or Mr.?
Well, the, the, the point, the point of the matter is, is that any distortion that this county has not really cut every budget, just look at the people that come in here last year and the previous year. My plan, my plan was to increase a thousand dollars. My first, my first year here, we increased the, the volunteer fire departments from nineteen thousand to twenty thousand. My plan was to increase them every year a thousand dollars where we got more in line and to help with workers' comp. Well, when property reappraisals hit, everything went out the window. We could not increase. We cut, cut five percent here, across the board, five percent. We continued to cut because of these revenues. And because the school board was taking more, we did not adjust the following year up, back up to fourteen point four million. We kept it low. That's, that, that's the, that's the struggle that we've gone through. Now, I, we kept the promise to keep it nine point five for three years. I want to keep it at nine point five. I want to keep it at nine point five. That would bring us in additional four hundred and forty-nine thousand, three hundred and seventy-one dollars. But what did I just tell you? The federal building, which I voted against, I wanted to, I wanted to spend fifteen million instead of twenty-four million down there, but I got outvoted, okay? It costs us one point four million per year. Four hundred and forty-nine thousand won't even, which means that we'll have to cut the volunteer fire departments. The sheriff's deputies that five years ago were fourth in state in salary are now twenty-first in the state. They need a substantial increase to be competitive. These are first responders, essential personnel, essential public services. We've got, in addition to the one point four million, we're going to have relocation expenses down there. That's going to be probably a hundred thousand dollars just to move everyone down there. We've got a, a hundred and forty thousand dollars additional utilities to run that building down there. We've got, uh...
And cleaning.
We've got additional transit authority. We want, transit authorities losing all their money. They're coming to us, asking us to provide more support to try to get buses. And you know, Dave, you and I have talked a lot about trying to, to put money into buses and we're, we're still looking at that. The courthouse square, look at courthouse square. It is desperate need of repair. It is dangerous out there. We didn't have the money to do it because we made a promise to help these widows and people on fixed income. Renovations to the current courthouse. Once any people move out of here, we're going to have to give the other offices proper area to work. So, we've got renovations there. We've got additional records, uh, storage that might be necessary. There's, there's hope to improve the county, uh, the working recreation. There's hope, well, one thing, we've got to buy a whole new telephone system. Our telephone system's outdated here. Telephone systems, uh...
Two thousand and four.
Brand new telephone system. We got to, we got, we got to upgrade the equipment to enhance the Operation Nine One One Center. Now, they came in and they want to adjust the landline fee. Now, they've talked to us, but they've never, they've never presented that until a few weeks ago. They need equipment to bring it up, my understanding, about seven hundred thousand dollars. Well, at a dollar, a dollar and twenty cents per month, per landline, it will take forever to come up with seven hundred thousand dollars. So, seven hundred thousand dollars out of the general revenue has to be paid to upgrade Nine One One. That's part of this tax. Seven hundred thousand dollars, it will eventually be paid back.
Uh, as I...
Bring all that to finance it.
What?
Well, we'll talk about...
Well, we, we, we'll, we'll talk about that. That just costs more money.
Yeah.
We, uh, I, like I, to, to bring, to bring the sheriffs from a four thousand dollars increase will bring them from twenty-first up to ninth. We're the third largest county, third most, the second most prosperous county. And we're still, we're, we're at the low end of the scale paying these deputies. That's just not right. We didn't, we didn't give any salary increases across the board to any employee last year. We were given one and a half before that for the year, the year before that. They haven't got any salary increase. So, to bring them in line, that's three, that's, uh, we want to give a three percent increase. We also have the, well, we also have the situation of, um, of if the concealed weapons permits drop way off, we're going to have to buy the equipment, the vest and everything. We're going to have to fund it out of the general revenue. Right now, the concealed weapons permits fund has been paying for those things. And, and that, and that's the tune of a hundred and seven thousand dollars a year.
Health insurance.
For the cost of health insurance has, has drastically shot up. We are not adding any new fancy stuff. These things that I've run down very quickly is four point eight million dollars. Now, my question to the people that are screaming and hollering, what do you want cut out? Want to cut out the fire departments? Want to cut out the deputies? How about cutting out the telephone system? How about cutting out Nine One One? What do you want cut out? There is, there is nothing, well, don't get me started on that. You know, I, I was in the minority, but I had to support it once the majority passed. So...
What benefit is that for the citizens?
A lot, but, okay.
Well, I, I, let me, let me just close. I, I, I don't want to get into that because you, you get me on my soapbox and I'll get even further, further up. The reality is, I don't know whether I'm going to vote for this or not. I still don't know whether I'm going to vote for this or not.
You don't have to vote for it all.
Uh, wait, sir, I don't mean to be, you can't make any comments. Thank you. That's all right.
But the bottom line is that we had to advertise a percent in the paper or we couldn't have the public hearing. I said, okay, I'll put down twelve percent because there's no way that I will go back up to twelve point twelve. Because at twelve percent, we've still reduced your taxes from four years ago for the reappraisal. But I won't, I'm not even sure I'll go to twelve. But my question is, what do you want cut out of here? Four point eight million and we're raising an additional three point seven. So, we're coming up with another million from the budget cuts that you want.
That's all I know. Thank you. Um, I'll try and answer some of the questions that were brought up. They were legitimate questions. You may not like my answers, but I'm known to just tell you the answer and then, you know, then you can go from there. A couple of things, I want very clear. As Mr. Callen stated, I was new. I was asked to support maintaining the nine point five and I felt it was the right thing to do for the citizens. It was the worst thing to do for the county because we had to make a decision. Now, also when people say, well, there was such an increase, yes, there was. But then I also look at, you also had seventeen years that you weren't paying what you should have been paying, which got us into this situation. That's all, it's, it's past us. We have to move forward. We got to take, you know, what we're given. We have a new judicial building, which I think is going to be exceptional. For example, the Supreme Court that oversees the judicial system and the court system. We have Chief Kajoe, who's in a room that's unacceptable. It doesn't meet the requirements or the standards. We had to come up to meet the standards of his courtroom. This is not us. The problem is we have a lot of state and federal mandates, which and, and Mr. Smith will tell you from Nine One One, that are unfunded and that's what we're frustrated about. So, what happened was not only did we get the unfunded mandates during this three-year period, but we also had a state this year, state tax office, I won't blame it on anyone, who was then ruled by a new majority and a governor that said, we have a hundred and eighty million dollar budget problem. The law says, the constitution, they have to balance the budget. There were no new revenues. We didn't see any new revenues. What they did was steal here, take here and read a number of the places with the county and, and the city, which is very unfortunate. So, with that, even with that said, I remember last year, and I got a lot of heat because I told everyone of the non-funding, uh, that we, we have seventy-five different, uh, non, not, non, nonprofit organizations. And we cut five to ten percent from everyone last year. We told them it could probably be twenty percent. Basically, what we did this year and is cut, not only did we lose the coal severance of around three hundred thousand, but now we're taking, we cut this group to eighty percent. But that isn't right because this is where we need, we need these agencies. So, we then took the twenty percent, which isn't even talked about yet basically, and put it in our general revenue. So, it's back at a hundred percent. Now, as many of you are concerned, I have the volunteer fire department that is rightfully so unfunded to what they believe they should be funded. And I have a group of people saying, we're, we're, you know, why are we raising? So, do I completely cut the volunteer fire department? One of the biggest problems, and again, please don't attack the messenger. The majority of the people have, have a concern, and I think it's a legitimate concern. We have a university. There's a lot of positive to the university. There's also negative of paying the fair share. And I think that's what basically, as much as we argued, that's what we're hearing in the argument. Right now, because of the way the law reads, and I don't blame the assessor because the assessor can only do what his interpretation of the law is and that's why it'll end up in court. We cannot, this group, go after any of that private-public partnership. We cannot. We can only do what the law allows us to do. And what we did was we sat at the Board of Equalization hearings for six hours and we dealt with each one individually. One, we agreed with the assessor. One, there was a concern and a problem that developed. And one that clearly showed us, by the way the law is written in West Virginia, the ACC group, which one is that? I don't...
College Park.
The College Park is zero. The way they determined it. Now, it may be incorrect or what, but that is how we have been informed. That's why the courts will ultimately decide. But the bottom line was this. The argument that was said to us was, are they a part of the state? Which Eldon keeps reminding me, they are. And is the mission of WVU what they are building, whether right or wrong? And the argument is they are saying they are building dorms for the students, which is a mission of the university. Whether right or wrong, that's how it reads right now. So, that's why we have this frustration. Yes, they, I believe it's roughly fifty-two percent of the property.
It's a legal term.
And, okay, okay, but the problem is, this is what we have been informed by and this is, we can only go by what we are able to make the decisions on. Now, with that being said, let's go back to what we're actually doing and, and Mr. Callen is correct. Even after these last three years, if we would have kept the rate at twelve...
Twelve point twelve.
Twelve point twelve, you would be, I mean, we're not even talking, your tax rate probably would be at seventy-five percent of what it is now and more. So, where our concern is that we tried for three years, but like everything else, utilities go up, expenses go up and services. And we are now on a collision course of competing, not only with, people would think we're competing with Marion County, with Washington, Pennsylvania. We're competing nationwide for businesses to come in. We believe this community can offer a great deal for businesses to come in and people to come in. What we're trying to do is show us that we can be in and move forward. And that's what this group, and that's what this funding is doing. When you really look at it, I said it's basically a candy bar levy, as I call it. For a person who owns a hundred thousand dollar house, it's a thirty dollar increase, which is less than one candy bar a week. And that's what, what we're talking about is the funds and the money that goes to the county. Now, do you have questions or concerns about, whether it be the city, whether it be the school board? We understand them. We have our concerns and we've, we've known to ruffle feathers. But all we can deal with as elected officials is come up and have we tightened the budget? We tightened the budget enormously for three years. Yes, we consolidated services. We cut people out. We did during this period of time. We're not hiring any new people in this budget. All we're doing now is saying, okay, for those people for the last four years, you deserve a three percent cost of living raise. The people say, you deserve better parks and recreation. And that's what we're trying to do. Our number one concern has been on the community, why people don't come here. They, they see the schools, they see the workforce, they see the housing, which we're, we're having a little difficulty in, I want to call lower housing level, you know, but recreation is lowest among everyone. We do not have, with all these services, and I'll end with this, with all these services that we're providing, many of the other counties, as we said, are at fourteen point eight, before they even go fourteen point three. We're fifty-first if we go up to just twelve. But many of these other counties have a ballpark levy. They have a transit levy. They have a library levy, and there's one.
Art levy.
And a fire levy. We don't have any of those, and we're still providing the services. And that's why we hope you'll support what we're trying to do. So I will end with that, and I'll ask if there's a motion at this time. Well, I didn't know, oh, I thought, I asked before. Okay, I'm sorry. I asked before. Go ahead. I'm sorry. I apologize.
Obviously, I am new to the process. This is my first budget review. Being a businessman, um, this is what I determined even in the campaign, that these needs were going to have to be addressed because I've followed what's going on in the community. Uh, we've given a great deal of thought into this. Anybody who thinks otherwise is severely, uh, totally wrong. So I hope that you will accept these explanations, uh, because they are heartfelt. We will look into all concerns. The point I present is a cohesiveness to work together and to work positively. But that's the fire department, and I have already been appointed to meet with each individual fire department so that I can speak to them and tell them our concerns and hear their concerns. So going forth in the future, um, of course, I don't have the past history. I can't speak to that except as you, the general public. This being my first time, so, thank you.
I think you all done a great job. You know, it's, uh, you're doing your job, and we appreciate it.
I appreciate it.
The ad was only informative. It wasn't against it. It was to let the public know.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, is there a motion to raise the levy rate two and a half cents?
I would like to recess. I, I, I've got to talk about this because I, I'm still not, I'm still not comfortable with the twelve percent.
Twelve cents it would be.
Or twelve cents.
Is there a second to recess? Because.
I'm just not comfortable with that.
Okay, there's no second to recess. Okay. Is there a motion?
I will second the recess.
You'll second the recess? Uh, for how, what, how long, okay, how long are we planning to recess? Because I believe the people are here, and I just am very uncomfortable not doing it in front of the public.
Well, go ahead and do it.
Well, I.
I mean, I, I'm not, I'm not gonna make a motion. I'm not gonna second. I'm still not comfortable with this. I, I struggled hard to help the, help, help the taxpayer. And I, I knew, you know, I presented the true facts the way they are, but I'm still uncomfortable with a two point five percent increase.
Two cent.
Well, two point, whatever it is. I, I'm, I'm, I'm uncomfortable with it. I, I, and I'm not, I, I just need to, I just need to get away for a little bit because I just think about whe- whether, you know, when you fight for four years, it, it, it's kind of hard to all of a sudden flip.
Okay. Are you willing to make a motion for the two point five cent?
Yes, I am. Uh, I'm, I'm willing to make that motion to accept this.
Okay, and, and I second that motion. We have a motion before us, which it would increase the levy rate at this time, two point five cents. Um, did you want any more discussion? Because we understand your concern.
Uh, I sat down there in the legislature representing this commission. Criticizing the, uh, and this is tough for me because I did fight for, for every taxpayer and, and all the people that cried in front of me. During that, that time. Here are three thousand, and I see a couple of people in the audience that were here. Here are three thousand people that are on fixed incomes. And knowing that I could, we could only affect a quarter of it, we couldn't affect the overall part of it. You know, I, I criticized the, the legislators, and I criticized the, uh, the executive branch for not having the courage to do what is right.
So I believe your criticisms are right, uh, Eldon. I really do. Uh, but you read the entire list.
Right.
Okay, and it, it leads basically to that conclusion. That's why I went ahead and made the motion. I'm not trying to in-run you or, you know, uh, or put any, you know, any pressure on you. But the way I viewed it was the fact that your listing of everything and asking what should be cut leads us to that conclusion of this adoption of this budget at this time.
And, and just for, and for clarification, uh, because I want to get the exact numbers correct for the newspaper. It was four point eight two million of what is, we're looking at, plus the one point three million that was not in there for the pay raise. That's not in this. So it would actually make it six point one million, and we are getting three point eight million from this.
Which means we've got to cut other.
Well, we're gonna have to look at, yeah.
Agencies, we just restored to two thousand and eleven level. We didn't restore to, we didn't give them any cost of, we just restored what we cut.
We restored it back to the two thousand level. So that's why, I mean, it looks like we're increasing, but we're going back and leveling back to the two thousand, and it's a very difficult decision. But I think what, uh, you kind of said was, sometimes when it takes leadership to move forward and make the difficult decisions to get us our feet set so we can compete, and, and I believe that's what, that's why I will be supporting it. So at this time, I'll call for the question. All those in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, votes three, zero. Thank you. Um, we do have an executive session, but I'm gonna ask if we can recess for about ten minutes so we can. I appreciate everyone's support. I hope you do go, but we will get that sheet for you. I think that's a great idea to show the actual tax level. So I have recess for ten minutes. Thank you. Okay, we are out of recess. We're back in session. Do I have a motion to go into executive session?
Second.
Okay, we have executive session to discuss personnel issues. Uh, all those in favor to go into executive, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? We're in executive session for a little while. Thank you. Okay. Do I have a motion to move out of executive session?
So moved.
Second.
Then properly moved in second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, we're now in regular session. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
So.
Okay, properly moved in second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned. Thank you.